Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of the United States.
As implied in the Open Public Beings Act, Chapter 231, P.L., 1975, a quitnotice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and Star Ledger on January 16th, 2025, posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now onto a proclamation for Ed Salvis.
If everyone could read it down front. So, good evening, everyone. Whereas Ed Salvis has dedicated an outstanding five decades of his professional life to the field of broadcasting and journalism, cementing the place in local media landscape; and whereas his long history with the city of Asbury Park began in 1968 at WJLK Radio, the radio voice of the Asbury Park Press, where he served for 21 years as a respected reporter and newscaster; and whereas, following his distinguished radio career, Mr. Salvis continued to keep the community informed through his work with The Coaster newspaper, where he provided vital coverage on business stories and the extensive redevelopment of the Asbury Park beachfront; and whereas, in 2013, Ed Salvis was a founding member and integral part of the team that established the Asbury Park Cable Television Advisory Committee, known as APTV; and whereas, Mr. Salvis demonstrated exceptional commitment and consistency by serving as the secretary of the APTV Commission for a full decade, from its establishment in 2013 until 2013; and whereas, his leadership and expertise were instrumental in elevating the quality and professionalism of APTV, as highlighted by his role in representing the organization on the statewide Jersey Access Group, JAG; and whereas, through his dedication, APTV gained considerable statewide recognition, earning more than 20 awards from the Jersey Access Group, JAG, for the outstanding videos produced by Asbury Park TV; and whereas, the mayor and the city council wish to formally acknowledge and express their gratitude to Mr. Ed Salvis for his tireless efforts, his commitment to public access media, and his immeasurable contributions to informing, entertaining, and serving the residents of the city of Asbury Park. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Mayor Moore and the city council of Asbury Park that Ed Salvis is hereby thanked and commended for his long and distinguished service and unwavering dedication to Asbury Park TV and the city of Asbury Park, and it is wished all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you, Ed Salvis.
Do I want to say a few words? Well, thank you. This is a nice surprise. I didn't expect anything like this and didn't realize what I had done for all these years. When you just add it all up, it's great. Thank you very much again, and I'm still working on it, so there's more.
Good evening, mayor and council. There's just one application before you this evening, and that's for the Market Street Annual Coat Giveaway, which would be held this coming Saturday. Are there any questions?
No, but that gets a huge crowd, Leisha, so just get your police now.
Yeah.
They're closing the street and hiring officers.
They hire police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leisha. We're now onto Mayor and City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, I do. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Leisha Floyd and also the Recreation Advisory Committee, you know, for Thanksgiving. I'm thinking of Turkey Day already, but for Halloween, we had a trunk or treat, and I wanted to thank Ms. Leisha for another outstanding event, taking care of the children here in Asbury Park, and we had a wonderful time. We had at least 1,000 people that attended, so we also wanted to thank all of those who decorated their trunks and donated candy and who participated, and we're looking forward to seeing you all next year. And again, Ms. Leisha, thank you so very much for all that you do here at Asbury Park. And also, Ms. Chapman, she's also part of the Recreation Committee, so I wanted to thank you as well. The other thing I would like to say is, in October's meeting, there was a resolution regarding the Mercy Center, and I made a mistake, and I voted no. It passed by all of the members here, but unfortunately, it was not unanimous. So when I make a mistake, I like to make sure that you all know. I hold myself accountable for it. I made a mistake in saying no. I cannot change that vote, but I want the Mercy Center, they're at an event today, but I did get a phone call from them, and I want them, as well as the community, to know that I have supported them in all the years. My children have, my daughter attended Sisters Academy. I supported them then, I support them now, and in the future. So I just wanted to make that correction, and that's all that I have for today. Thank you. Oh, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, in case I don't see you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
Okay, and moving on from Halloween and Thanksgiving, I'm already going to start making some announcements about some holiday tree lightings. And so on December 5th, there's the First Fridays at Art and Sound at the train station. Also, on December 5th, there's the Fireman's Park Christmas Tree Lighting at 5:00 in Fireman's Park on Main Street in Sunset. It's great, lots of kids, lots of activities there. Saturday, December 13th, is the Kwanzaa Celebration at the Senior Center on Atkins Avenue from 2:00 to 5:00. And then there is a Springwood Park Christmas Tree Lighting at 5:00. Also, on Saturday, December 13th, we're still waiting for details on the menorah lighting in Kennedy Park and the Chambers Christmas Tree Lighting downtown. Just want to get that on everybody's calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Good evening, everyone. The Quality of Life Committee is sponsoring, along with Monmouth County Meets the Needs and the Mercy Center, a hurricane disaster relief for Jamaica. We're requesting that you make donations of, and this is a lot, rice, flour, cornmeal, oats, sugar, salt, canned sardines, canned mackerel, canned tuna, condensed milk, tin of corned beef, canned mixed fruits, tea bags, dried or canned kidney beans, and any baby food. The drop-off site is Monday, November 17th, at the Islander Caribbean Restaurant, 100 Memorial Drive. If you have any questions, you can call 917-543-5276, or you can call me here in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I'm just going to acknowledge Cassandra Dickerson. In response to the federal government shutting down SNAP, I just want to thank the council, the city administration, and Cassandra for very quickly organizing a meal kit giveaway for people who are experiencing food insecurity, so great job, Cassandra.
Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Just a safe and happy Thanksgiving to all, and just remember what the day's about. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mayor and City Manager.
Yes, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor and council. We have a presentation that we would like to do in reference to the survey sent by the Department of Community Affairs labeled Best Practices. So I have our CFO here present, and we would like to do a quick presentation.
In your packet, you should have received the Best Practices inventory. It's a division requires it every year from all municipalities. There's a total of 70 questions. 24 are unscored. I call it a fishing expedition to see what other things they can have us do. The remainder are part of the scoring system. Points are either one or half a point, and the total score Miss Palomay received is 45. We received a 38. If you do not get a minimum score of 32, you lose part of your state aid, so we're safe from that. And there's multiple categories. There's budget, capital projects, the environment, ethics, financial administration, insurance, personnel, procurement, redevelopment, and transparency. So I think we did pretty good on this. I don't know if you guys would have any questions?
Yeah, me, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor and City Attorney.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. We're now onto public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute timeline for each speaker.
Hi, I'm Dory McCafferty from the Monroe Towers. We have a tenants association. We're here tonight just to, first of all, thank city council and the city for working with us on security issues that we have in our building, and they're very serious. And we really want to thank the police officers as well. We've had really great support from the city council, and we continue to hope to have that support as we move into the winter. It gets worse because there's more and more people entering our building that don't live there, and it's just been a threat to our security in the building and our safety. And you guys already know the situation. I don't really need to go into details with that, and I just want to thank you so much for that. Thank you also for all the coffee councils that you do. I went to that today and saw Eileen. I really appreciate that. It's a chance for us to get out into the community and meet some of the council members one-on-one, which is great. It's very informal, so thank you for that as well. And if you have any updates on what's going on with the security of the apartment complexes in the city of Asbury, that would be great to hear. And also, completely off-topic, but if there's any updates on what's happening down at the Paramount with the restoration, whatever, because we can't see any of it. So I thank you so much again for all the work you guys do, and I just appreciate the time that you put in. Thank you.
Thank you. That's somebody else. I know we're working on a new ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we've spoken and we've had several conversations where in the drafts, I feel comfortable saying the draft stage of an ordinance related to security for large apartment buildings, and Kevin just reviewed a bunch of what other towns have done and how they've handled it. So still, like, going through what works, you know, in these other towns and then sort of stealing them for Asbury. So regularly meeting, just got that from you, Kevin, last week, and going through the seven or eight other towns who have something similar, and then we'll pull out. So I'm happy for you all to come to a council meeting, but if you just, you know, give me a call, Dory, in like two weeks, and I can sort of tell you where we're at, if that's helpful.
And then, quick update on the Paramount is that there is no update. We are still working with them. They have till the end of 2026 to spend down the $13 million that was awarded by the state, so we are working with them on those plans and ensuring that waterproofing to that building happens, and it puts it in better condition than it was. And in the meantime, the city has begun construction on two restrooms on the boardwalk. People keep reaching out and asking me what those holes are in the green spaces, but they are two restrooms similar to the ones on 7th Avenue that are going up on 1st and 4th. That's my update.
Matthew Allen, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, 1011 Main Street. Good evening, mayor and council. I actually brought notes today, so don't forget any. First, I want to thank you all for your support of the Carousel Awards. It was a great night. We celebrated some of the best of Asbury Park, including city employees, T-Gates, and Sylvia Sylvia, among a number of others, so thank you for your continuing support of that event every time we do it. Next, I want to make everyone aware of the Asbury Park Chambers Holiday Window Decorating Contest. We've been doing this contest for several years now, and I think it's helped make our town a little bit more festive during the holiday season. Any business is welcome to participate. They just need to contact the chamber. They can call us at 732-775-7676, or they can email us at info@asburyparkchamber.com. And they need to have their decorations up by November 26th. Judging of the windows will begin on November 28th, which is the day before Small Business Saturday. Our goal is to have all the windows decorated for Small Business Saturdays to last through the holiday season and really get, you know, a lot of excitement for the holidays. We've got three categories that we're going to be judging the windows on. One is most festive, best use of recycled or repurposed materials, and then there's a people's choice award, like we did last year, where the public gets to vote on their favorite window. And in addition to bragging rights, the winner in each category will receive a one-year membership with the chamber, as well as complimentary passes to each of our regularly-scheduled networking events. Again, all businesses are welcome to participate. You don't have to be a member of the chamber, and I left some flyers on the table over there about the window decorating contest. Also on the table, I left the new Chamber, Visit Asbury Park Chamber Member Guide is out. It's our most concisive list of all of our chamber members throughout town, and it's a great piece that we give to brides who are having their weddings here. We drop them at the rest areas on the parkway. It's a great piece that we have to help promote Asbury Park. And lastly, to follow up on Eileen's, on what Eileen said about tree lighting and such, we have our downtown tree lighting and menorah lighting coming up. The downtown tree lighting will take place on December 6th, with festivities beginning at 5:30, and the tree being lit at 6:00 p.m. by Santa Claus himself. Then 10 days later, on December 16th at 6:00 p.m., we will have our annual menorah lighting in Kennedy Park with the help of our friends from Havana the Shore. Both events have become hallmarks of the Asbury Park holiday season, and I hope everyone will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Louis Morales. I own Endless Waves at 550 Cookman Avenue. I'm here to talk to you guys as a business owner, but also a resident of Asbury. One of the biggest issues we're having as business owners right now is, there's nobody in town, and unless we decide we're going to do something about that, within a year, you're going to lose a lot of businesses on Cookman and on Bangs and some of the other streets. We're all pretty close when it comes to the business owners. We're always talking. We talk numbers, and I can tell you real numbers. I'm up 2% year-over-year, and 17% of that is because I saw the problem and went online and started doing online sales. So every single year, it's getting worse and worse. We had the worst summer we've had in forever, where I go outside on Cookman Avenue and I'm counting parking spots in the middle of the day on a Saturday. So unless the town decides we want to actually start doing something to support the businesses and support the people coming into town, we're all going to fail, and we won't be here anymore. And now we have all these big, beautiful condos going up, you know, 1.4, 1.5, 1.6 million, and they're going to have no retail, because there'll be nothing here. We'll all be out of business, and it's pretty, I know it's a lot of work, but at the end of the day, I've had some meetings with Matt, I've had meetings with Sylvia, and we need to do something that's going to draw people to the town, and whatever we're doing now just isn't working. I've been to the business meetings, and that's basically a waste of time. All right, that's a bid session that goes nowhere. It's a committee that has no teeth. So we need support from you guys to do something that's going to actually better us. And from talking to all the other business owners, we're willing to help. We're willing to step up and do whatever we can to make this town succeed, because we all love the town. I've lived here since 2017, way before I had my business. I decided to retire and open a business in this town because I loved it so much. But all of my work, all of my efforts are going to go to nothing if you guys don't help support us. I think one of the biggest things that needs to be done is a social media campaign that that's how people hear about us now. Our stores are successful because of social media, because of our online presence. We have people that come from New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, to come visit us, to come shopping, because they found us on our Instagram, on our webpage, and come visit. And it's my belief that Asbury Park needs to have a social media page that's dedicated to bringing people to town. It's a beautiful town. We have so much to offer, but nobody knows we're here. Every single year, there's less and less people coming here, and it's pretty evident in all of our numbers. And if you want to ask any of the business owners, we'll be happy to tell you what our numbers are, and they're pretty crappy. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for re-bringing it to our attention, and we're open to any of all the ideas. So, I mean, this is the first time, I'm not faulting you. I'm happy you've met with the business committee. I know people have met with them, and they've had better success than you're saying. I'm happy you're talking to Sylvia, so I'm guessing you're a member of the UEZ, which a lot of businesses are, and which is a total sin for everybody, because, I'm going to take a couple minutes. Urban Enterprise Zone, there's only 31 cities in the state that qualify for it, and Asbury Park's one of them. And the more businesses that sign up, the more money we get to address problems like this. The store owners will pay, if they're renting, will pay 10% of their rent for six months. We'll give them grants up to $5,000 for new signs and new facades. There's many other programs out there. You can buy up to $100,000 worth of equipment each year and pay 3.5% in taxes instead of 7%. Down the road, hopefully, we'll have a loan program, which would be less than, you know, the 17 or 24%. So the UEZ is good, but, I mean, it just blows me away where it costs nothing to sign up. Doesn't cost you a penny. You don't have to do anything. You just reap the rewards, and the money comes back to the town. And out of the 31 cities, people would say, well, I guess Newark and Jersey City are getting the most money out of anybody in the state. Totally wrong. Lakewood's getting the most money. They're getting about $9 million a year because businesses are joining, because they see the benefit. I'm glad you're a member, and hopefully you can talk to other businesses. Where I've gone and told people, would you please sign up, even if we can't use you if you're a bar or restaurant? But the more members we have, the more money we get back, and we can hopefully help solve your problem. Again, I wish I had this silver bullet. I can't, I mean, we're going to have to sit down and figure this out together, because there's not one set answer. But if you say social media, I mean, okay, you know, we'll talk after, but, I mean, we're willing to discuss that. But again, I appreciate you coming tonight and making a pitch about it, and I know other businesses we're meeting with because of the same concern. So we're open for ideas, and we do have some money through the UEZ that we can apply to businesses. But again, we're all going to have to work together and come up with the solutions. But I thank you for bringing it. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Landman. I'm a resident of 1700 Webb Street, the Miramar Building. And I just want to, first of all, thank Councilwoman Chapman for the Coffee with the Council Member event earlier today. It was a pleasure to meet you, and I appreciate our discussion on the issue that I just wanted to address. As an attorney, I just wouldn't feel right unless I made a record of the issue, and what that is, is that Starfield is developing the vacant lot between 7th and 8th Ave. and between Webb and Kingsley Streets. As part of that development, it's my understanding that they are in charge of a street widening project on 8th Ave. between Webb and Kingsley. They came at the end of January and shut down 8th Ave. between Webb and Kingsley in order to do that street widening project. They moved in some dirt, they moved in some construction vehicles, but they made no progress whatsoever on the project. Memorial Day weekend, they reopened the street, having made no progress, so that day trippers and people coming to use the beach could have access to parking. It was open all summer, and after See Here Now, they came and they shut down the street again. Once again, there are mounds of dirt and construction vehicles, and it's clear, unfortunately, that they're only using the street as a staging area for the construction of the vacant lot. And as residents in a large building, we rely on the street parking. Myself and a number of my neighbors have been seeking some sort of solution, because we come home from work late, end up having to park a few blocks away, and speaking with Councilwoman Chapman, it comes to my attention that the appropriate members of the city administration were not aware of the fact that Starfield has shut the street down, and that apparently the city manager will be in touch with Starfield to have the street reopened, which I appreciate, and I thank you for your efforts on that. Thank you.
And I thank you, and I thank Mary Villanueva, who sent us an email last week about it, and that was the first time I heard about it. So, I mean, a lot of people, and I don't fault them, they think we know everything. We only know if we drive around and see it, if we're told. So again, if there's anything out there that anybody sees, please bring it to our attention, because they have no permission to shut down the street without our say-so. I'm disappointed our police never brought it to our attention. The city manager is going to start fixing this tomorrow with the conversation with Starfield and give them so many hours to get their stuff off of our street, and I said, both of us, start backcharging them for all the parking spots and the loss of revenue. Probably can't do it, but, I mean, again, if anybody sees anything wrong in the city, you're doing yourselves a disservice, you're doing us a disservice by not bringing it to our attention. We all have listed phone numbers, we all have city phone numbers, emails. We can't fix what we don't know, so I deeply appreciate you, Mary, and a couple of the residents from Miramar just bringing it to our attention last week. No, thank you. I apologize.
And thank you for coming, for those who came to Coffee with the Councilperson. We really find out a lot on those opportunities to have one-on-one conversations, so thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Yep.
Hi, Maddie Fallon, 908 Main Street. Happy to be here. Thank you for everything that you guys do. I was just wondering if there could be a moratorium put on all these condo developments happening in the city. I feel like the city is really, and I know a lot of other residents feel this way, that the city is losing a lot of that spark, a lot of the, what makes the city special, because there's all of these very bland, ugly, luxury condo buildings being put up, you know, for free to these developers. They're getting all these tax exemptions and what have you, and we're not really seeing the kickbacks of it. You know, they're doing the anchor program, they're not paying taxes. I know there's one on the agenda tonight where they're being tax exempt, so looking forward to having more of a discussion about this, but I know a lot of the residents of the city hate them, and we don't need more of them. We have plenty, so looking forward to keeping this conversation going. Thank you.
No, I thank you, and just, I appreciate your comments and, you know, the original plan from 2002, and then redone in 2008, whatever, called for over 3,400 units in the waterfront. They're going to build less than 2,000, and there's nothing we can do about that. Me, truthfully, I'm happy it's 2,000, not 3,400, but we have people in the city writing articles saying, like, we screwed up, that we didn't let more eight-story buildings be built and more density. And I'm like, where's this coming from? I mean, we got enough. The most we're going to have is 2,000. We're not there yet, but they have every right to build that, and there's nothing we can do, and by law, we have to give them pilots. So, but you're right, we're losing some of the grittiness in what made Asbury Park Asbury Park, and with the insane prices, it is gentrification, people being forced out of the city, and it breaks all five of our hearts, because we've been here so long, and, you know, it's not the city that I remember as a kid or even working for the city when 5th Ave. Fifth Avenue and Sunset Avenue were all garden apartments, and that's where half the DPW workers lived. And now, they're all condos. So, you're absolutely right, but I'm happy it's 2,000, not 3,400, where people are slamming us, saying like, we screwed up. We should have more eight-story buildings and more units and everything. I'm like, maybe I'm miss, I'm missing something here, but I agree with you.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now closed. Moving on to the minutes, I have the regular and executive meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2025, and the special meeting minutes from October 31st, 2025. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there'll be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular items, then said items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent tonight, we have Resolutions 2025-438 through 2025-442 and 2025-444 through 2025-454. Do you have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to individual resolutions, I have Resolution 2020, sorry, 2025-455, Resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025-456, Resolution authorizing change order number one for the electronic door locking system at the new fire department headquarters.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025-457, Resolution authorizing a contract to Millennium Communications Group for the police camera expansion project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025-458, Resolution, supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds. Waterfront Redevelopment Area Infrastructure Project of the City of Asbury Park and aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8 million in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Kay Hovnanian at the Views at North Shore Urban Renewal LLC as a portion of the nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds that the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20th, 2013.
I have a question.
We have to get a, I'll move it. Somebody second it?
Second.
Okay, questions, guys?
So, can somebody dummy it down for me? What are we doing here? Borrowing from your words.
You do wanna explain it, Kevin?
I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't part of this.
The RAB bonds.
It's a RAB bond.
Come in, please.
Mr. Pilot?
No, it's the bonds.
The bonds.
Yes, the revenue, the redevelopment al, um, thank you, area bonds. Each project, there's a pilot, and then there's the bot, the bot, the special assessment, and then the bonds for the infrastructure. So, every project is on the agenda for, before a bond sale.
Okay.
And then, the subsequent resolutions are to retain our professionals that are involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baz Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-459, Resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a professional service agreement with Public Resource Advisory Group for the provision of RAB administrative services for Kay Hovnanian at the Views at North Shore, block 4302, lot 2, 201 to 203, Eighth Avenue, in the amount of $10,000.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Baz Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-460, Resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a professional service agreement with BJH Advisors for the provision of RAB administrators for Kay Hovnanian at the Views at North Shore, block 4302, lot 2, 201 to 203, Eighth Avenue, in the amount of $16,000.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Baz Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-461, Resolution authorizing bond aggregating the principal sum not to exceed $2 million authorized by two bond ordinances herefore adopted to the finance, to finance part of the cost of various parking improvements in the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and one consolidated issue of bonds, and providing for the form, maturities, sale, and other details of said consolidated issue.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Baz Anderson?
No.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-462, Resolution of approval to submit an award extension request to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the LA 2024 Municipal Eight Grant Project, Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue improvements.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-463, Resolution authorizing the purchase of an ambulance for the fire department.
Move it. Second.
Councilwoman Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances for introduction, I have Ordinance 2025-28, Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, amending Chapter 5, Section 5 dash 4.22, entitled No Smoking, Burning, Vaporizing, or Littering of Tobacco Products and Certain Substances on Public Beaches and Boardwalk, to make the ordinance consistent with state law with public hearing date of November 25th, 2025.
Move to open. Second.
Yeah.
This is, yeah.
First reading.
Yeah.
First reading.
Motion to adopt.
Wake up. Move it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baz Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances for public hearing and second reading, I have Ordinance 2025-27, Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of financial agreement with Asbury Avenue Owners Urban Renewal LLC for a long-term tax exemption for the redevelopment project on the property located at 1012 Asbury Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block 501, lot 1. Do you have a motion to open the meeting for public comment on Ordinance 2025-27?
Move to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on Ordinance 2025-27 is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and your comments may only be about Ordinance 2025-27.
Is somebody gonna give a brief explanation to the public what this is?
This is the financial agreement for the project at 1012 Asbury Avenue. This, we, this is for project with 40% affordable. They had received 9% tax credits from the state of New Jersey to build the affordable. They, we, the council originally adopted an HMFA pilot for this project. This is a different type of pilot, but it is still necessary for the affordable housing, and we receive a greater rate of return on, on this type of pilot.
It's not only 40% affordable, isn't it 15%?
Workforce. Yes.
Workforce redevelopment.
Yes. It's a total of 55%.
Yes. Um, yes.
And it's artist live work space as well.
Correct. Affordable artist work lives space. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you'd like to ask any questions about this ordinance? Seeing nobody, we need a motion to open, right?
We, we motioned.
Oh, did, okay.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do you have a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-27?
Move to adopt.